I'd like to call the meeting of the Shreveport City Council meeting to order. Would ask that if you have your cell phones, if you would please put them on silent or if you would turn them off. We've asked Pastor Clifford McLean to come and lead us in prayer, Pastor of the Union, Little Union Baptist Church, Pastor McLean. Will you stand, please?
May we pray, Eternal Spirit, our God and our Father, peace and love. We thank you for the privilege of gathering in this place to do the work of your people. Forgive us our sins and our shortcomings. And we pray, our Father, for the representatives of the various political subdivisions, the leadership of our city. And we pray that we will deliberate with kindness, respect, and politeness. And even if we disagree, let us, our Father, do it in a spirit of love and unity, that we'll be reminded that we work not for ourselves, but for you and the people of this wonderful city. We ask now that you would preside over all that we do for a good outcome and progress for the city and its people, lest ever agency and entity a part of this city. And then, our Father, in the end, when we have done the business of the day, we will do what pleases thee. And we ask it in thy name. Amen.
Amen. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kind of like in church. Thank you. Madam Clerk, at this time, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Fuller.
Here.
Councilwoman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Jackson.
Here.
Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilman Bowman.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference Monday, April 25th, 2022, and the city council meeting Tuesday, April 26th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Butcher. Any questions? If not, let's vote.
The motion carries with seven.
Thank you. Does any council member have any awards recognition or distinguished guest not to exceed 15 minutes?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Councilman Nicholson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to first recognize Senior United States District Judge Donald Walter, who's here today, which is an unusual treat for the Shreveport City Council. So, Your Honor, thank you for taking the time to join us for our meeting. I'd also like to recognize and thank his daughter, Susanna Poliak, a former member of the Cadda Parish School Board for being here, and invite her to make brief remarks.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Nicholson, and thank you to the members of this council for taking just a few minutes to hear me. I wanted to talk briefly about the gun violence that is plaguing our area and is tragically killing our children. To paraphrase the movie network, "I'm mad, and I'm not going to take it anymore, and I don't want anyone, anywhere in this city to take it anymore. Enough is enough." I'm sure some may think I'm only here once the violence affects me and my neighborhood. Fair enough, I understand that criticism, and I accept it. Now, what I want to know is what our leadership is prepared to do in the short, medium, and long term. The fact of the matter is that all children should be able to sit in a car, or play in their neighborhood, or go to their parents' place of work, or sleep in their beds, or visit their grandparents, and not get shot and killed for it. The fact that children can't do these basic things just shows how miserably we're failing them. My heart breaks for these children, victims and perpetrators alike, but I realize that thoughts and prayers just aren't going to cut it anymore. It's not enough for citizens to simply complain. We must act. And I and many others are ready to do whatever, if that's pay more taxes, if it's walk the streets, if it's tutor, whatever, we're ready to do what's needed. But we absolutely need leadership. So I'm asking all of the governmental departments for some collective action and collaboration. I'm asking that you please form a Public Safety Commission led and staffed by the DA, the Courts Juvenile, the Cadda Parish School Board, the Mayor, the Council, and the Parish Commission. This Public Safety Commission can gather data, plan, organize, and implement short, medium, and long-term policy and goals. It would take advantage of your collective expertise. I firmly believe that each of you have a piece of the puzzle, but only collective action can make a whole picture. Again, please know that I'm ready to help you with your leadership in whatever way is useful, but please, please, lead. Our city is amazing, but it has to be that way for everyone if this city is going to survive and thrive. Thank you.
Ms. Poliak, thank you. I'll say, as you all know, that the neighborhood I share with Susanna and her husband and their children is still absolutely reeling from the death of a 13-year-old child by gun violence just last week, and I'm committed to doing everything I can with all of you, my colleagues on the council, and other leaders throughout the city to address the problem. The status quo is just not going to cut it in Shreveport anymore. So I hope that we will continue to work together to come up with solutions to address the problem in concrete and immediate ways.
Any other council member have any recognition?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I'd also like to invite Dr. John Vancheri and the medical students accompanying him to address the council.
Yes, sir.
I'll say for the public, this is Dr. Vancheri of national COVID fame. He has done just an incredible job for Shreveport, for Louisiana, and for the entire country fighting the coronavirus, and we all of him debt a gratitude for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Nicholson, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, and Judge Walter. Good to see you. I'm John Vancheri. I'm a pediatric infectious disease specialist, and why am I here to talk about gun violence? Because it's an epidemic, just like the pandemic we've been through. And from my perspective, dealing with a pandemic like COVID is much easier than the problem we're dealing with, with gun violence. Amazing for me to say that. But what we've been through for the past two years is easy compared to gun violence. This is not a their problem, it's an our problem, it's all our problem. Twenty-two homicides in our city this year alone, one a week, is unacceptable. The life, those lives have affected families, will affect families for generations. We cannot estimate the impact of those deaths, especially the deaths of our children that should never happen. These are preventable deaths. With the right to bear arms comes the responsibility, and we all have that responsibility. So we pediatricians, residents, students from the medical school, we see these people when they're on death's doorstep, when they come in with gunshot wounds to all parts of their body, when they come in dying, we comfort them. Our nurses are so tired of gun deaths and gun violence in our community. And I would venture to guess many of them are more tired of gun violence and gun tragedy than the COVID pandemic. It's that big of a problem. This is not, there is not an easy solution. We recognize that. This is a very complex problem, and to get to a solution will require the input of all members of our community. We seek leadership. We ask our pastors to speak from the pulpit every week about gun violence, about protecting our families, protecting our children, preventing what our preventable deaths and preventable injuries due to guns. This is not new. Five years ago, Louisiana was ranked as number-one state in the country for pediatric gun deaths. Okay? This is not a new problem. It's an endemic problem. It's harder to solve than the problem of syphilis in our community. Those are infectious diseases. I know how to deal with those. This is a problem that is all of ours. So we stand, and we've brought posters for all of you to have in your offices and your places of business to keep our kids safe, implore parents to secure their firearms. A teenager with a handgun is a tragedy waiting to happen. We've seen it time and time and time again. So help, lead, prevent these deaths. This affects our businesses. This affects businesses who are looking at our community to join our community, to bring their families to our community, and they hesitate to do so when we're ranked so highly in gun deaths all around our city. These are preventable, and we have to change the status quo. So we stand with Mrs. Poliak, who spoke to you about needing leadership. We want the medical community to be a part of that because we are also dealing with this every day in our hospitals around the city. We thank you for your time and ask for your support going forward. And I've brought enough posters for each of your offices to have two, one hopefully for your place of business and one hopefully for your office where your voters can see it. Thank you very much.
Doctor, I appreciate your remarks so much, and I will just reiterate that I hope and I pray that those of us who exercise our constitutional rights to bear arms will do so responsibly and that we will secure our weapons when we are not using them so that we don't have to suffer the inevitable tragedy that results when we fail to do that. Thank you very much, Dr. Vancheri.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chairman.
Have you finished?
With apologies for monopolizing the floor, may I ask if any representative of Shriners Hospital is here today? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman.
I just, Dr. Vancheri, thank you, thank you for your words, thank you for this. I've often said that I think one thing that we could do as a council is, I think we need a public safety announcement, and that may sound very naive or very small considering what's going on, but the facts are, we've had four out of less than four children killed just this year alone. And it's not just a West Side, East Side issue, a black or white issue, it's affecting all of us. And I think you brought up a very good point. What Fortune 500 company is going to want to come to Shreveport and bring their employees and their children whenever we're having children shot and killed? So I'm, you know, I'm very much for bearing, you know, for the right to carry a weapon or to have a weapon, but also we have to be responsible with it. And one thing that I would like to propose at some point is for a public safety announcement to everybody at nine and 10 o'clock at night, lock your car up. It's real simple, remind people to do it. We shouldn't have to do that, but it's a fact. And then these guns get into the hands of these criminals that really don't care who they're shooting at. So, you know, and there's some things that they're doing to these guns now that you would think are just handguns, but now they can make them fully automatic, and it's dangerous. And in some cases, these kids are shooting themselves because they're making these guns to where they can't even control them. So we have a real problem, and I agree with you. I think it's, I think it's an epidemic that is a lot harder and to get to the cause of it, but I think that there's not one person sitting up here that doesn't want this to end and realizes that our children are our future. So I appreciate the ease, I appreciate you coming up, and I hope we can have some conversation and dialogue in the near future to try to stop this.
Any other council member have a guess?
I'd also like to just say this, that I believe in the power of prayer. I believe that through prayer, God will give us directions. I believe through prayer, God will bring us together, that we will provide solutions. I've asked Pastor CJ Johnson to go out and find pastors that will be present here on the 24th at 2:00. We will declare it Prayer Day in Shreveport, and he will have pastors, both black and white, that will come, and we will pray from 2:00 until 3:00. I've asked Councilman Nicholson if he would ask his pastor to be our guest at 3:00, Pastor Peter Manglin. And I just believe that through the power of prayer, God will give us an answer and direction. So that will happen on the 24th, our last council meeting in this month. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests today?
I do, Mr. Chairman, but if I may, I just want to, since we're talking about public safety, I too want to thank Dr. Vancheri. He and I have been working very closely over the last two years in fighting this pandemic in our community. So I'm glad that he pointed out how gun violence is impacting our public health as well and how endemic it is. The issues that we suffer from today, we're talking about our kids, you know, from Ms. Poliak's comments, our kids should be able to sleep safely in their homes and go and visit their family members. Well, I grew up in Shreveport, and I was born in 1985, and I was that kid that slept under my bed because there was gunfire outside of my house in Cedar Grove. So this is a problem that's been persistent in our community for a while, but as I look around the audience and I hear comments from today, and I go around the community, I'm a bit encouraged at this moment because more people are starting to get involved. And if there's anything that I've been consistent about when it comes to public safety, every time I talk about a new initiative that we're doing with the Shreveport Police Department and the city of Shreveport is doing, I say that it will be for naught if we don't have citizen involvement. So I'm excited about this moment. When everybody embraces this problem as their own, regardless of what neighborhood these acts are taking place in, that's exactly what it's going to take. And anything less than it, we're going to continue to be in this cycle of crime, and it's just going to be, it's going to have a devastating effect on the future of this city. And talking about businesses and things of that nature, we are not the only city in America going through this right now. You know, it's multiple larger cities, even in Louisiana, that's suffering even worse than we are. But I don't want to be the norm. I don't want to just stay on that trajectory because that's what everybody else is, and nobody else up here does either. So if we're going to get after this problem, we're going to have to do it collectively. So I'm excited about the moment and look forward to working alongside city leadership, not just in the public sector, but even in the private sector with our healthcare leadership, because enough is enough. So I wanted to jump in on those comments, Mr. Chairman, but I also, I have a special guest today.
Yes, sir.
Sitting beside me, I have Ms. Scotland Knight, who is our student mayor for this month. Ms. Knight is a sixth grader at Pine Grove Elementary School. She has been described as a strong student, who is a great communicator and exhibits leadership skills, quality leadership skills. She's a member of Lake Bethlehem Baptist Church, and Mayor Knight enjoys writing, and she hopes to become a published author one day. At this time, I will turn the microphone over to Mayor Knight for her mayoral announcements.
The Department of Property Standards is holding its next sweep in District F on Wednesday, May 11th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Citizens can bring trash, debris, and tires for disposal to 400, 4,000 Vival Avenue Wednesday, May 11th. The city will join LDH and LSU Health Shreveport to offer COVID vaccinations at the Bill Clark World Community Center from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Vaccinations will also be offered on Thursday, May 12th, from noon to 2:00 p.m. at Billberry Park. All city spray grounds are now open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Spray grounds are located at A.B. Palmer, A.C. Steer, Airport Park, Devon Rains, Hattie Perry, Corrby's, and Lakeside.
All right. Mr. Chairman, will you come down and take a picture with me and Mayor Knight?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, will you come down and take a picture with me and Mayor Knight?
Yes, sir.
At this time, I'll ask Chief Reese to step up to the microphone. If you all have any questions for Chief Reese.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Chief Reese, thank you for your long service to the city.
I can barely hear you, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your long service to the city, and congratulations on your new position, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, sir. I'm wearing Edge. If anybody smells the fragrance coming off me, I'm wearing his right now.
Chief, congratulations. I know you've got a lot of things in store for the Shreveport Fire Department, and I'm sure that the Shreveport Fire Department has a lot of things in store for you as well.
Yes, sir.
So from one fire chief to another, it's not always going to be rainbows and butterflies, which I'm sure you already know, but I think you're the man for the job, so congratulations.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Councilman.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fuller.
Chief, it's very rarely we get some decisions that are kind of easy to vote on, so this is one of them. Congratulations.
Thank you. To my councilman, Southern Hills.
You told me I was your councilman.
When I'm at church, you are.
My grandmother's chief. She takes full ownership.
No, Chief, same sentiment as everybody else. I appreciate the job you've already done in the past. I think you've proven your testament and your dedication to Shreveport and to the Fire Department, and the Fire Department should be happy to receive you. I talked to the previous chief and the chief before him, and both of them were just excited and had great words to say about you, of course, and I told them they should be proud that you came behind them, and I appreciate the things that you said, that you're working on, that you want to see done, and looking for good things from you. So everybody's saying congratulations like we already voted on it, so congratulations to you, Chief. We hadn't been through public comment yet, so yeah, hold up.
Chief, I believe that's...
Yes.
No, is there anything else, Mr. Chairman? I don't want to interrupt. Chief Reese, you want to just make an announcement about the recognition, the statewide recognition that you all are about to receive?
Sure. So thank you, Mayor. Shreveport Fire Department, y'all actually recognized these men and women a couple councils ago, council meetings ago. It was a house fire on 83rd, 84th, 85th, one of those numbered streets in Cedar Grove, where we, where they saved two children and a father. One of those children was pulled out by Rescue 9, and we had to do some advanced airway in order to save that child's life. We're involved in the state of Louisiana's pediatric program right now, where we actually received money from them, but they have recognized those crews that specifically for that little girl, one of our EMS officers, Clark Jackson, wrote up the nomination. He serves on that board, where they will be receiving an award on the 17th of this month at 2:00 by Governor John Bell Edwards himself. He will present it to the Fire Department and to those members for their heroic efforts. We'll go down to Baton Rouge, and shortly after, there'll be a small reception in the Rotunda, and we'll be returning back to Shreveport, and those members actually go right back to work. So they'll be leaving on their time off at 9:00 in the morning, coming back to work, turnaround trip, and then going on to duty, which speaks to the importance of hiring. But we really appreciate that pediatric group and Governor John Bell Edwards for their recognition.
Chief, I believe that's all. Keep weighing the edge, you won.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, do you have any other communication relative to city business other than awards and recognition? Thank you. Do we have any reports? Does any member have any questions concerning, relative to property standards for Mr. Green? Did you receive the Revenue Collection Plan Implementation Report Finance? I see there are no public hearings. Madam Clerk, I think we need to add to the agenda the cab driver from yesterday so that we will be able to vote at the end of the meeting.
It's on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Do we have any legislation to be added? Seeing there's none. Today, we will hear public comments on agenda items only. We have, at this particular time, the vice chair will call the names, and he will also control the time.
Craig Lee?
Craig Lee, 1112 Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana District B. Glad I soon to be nominated, well, confirmed, I should say. Fire Chief Reese just spoke. I am at full approval of this distinguished young brother being certified by this body. He has demonstrated over the years the professionalism and the acumen to be fire chief. So I think this is a great recommendation from our mayor, and I know you guys will be approving him as well. I also want to thank Councilman Nicholson for recognizing the Shriners Hospital. One of the things that I try to do in the work that I do here in the city of Shreveport, especially for the past 27 years, is to focus on a lot of the positive aspects that we have in the city of Shreveport. The Shriners is the first Shriners hospital in the world, and, you know, people talk so much about the negative about Shreveport, and we rarely celebrate a lot of our positive achievements, and Shriners is one of those things. I don't know how many people have been over to Shriners. I had the good fortune of teaching a lesson, Mayor, to one of my colleague's children who complained a lot about her day. And Cousin Green, I took her and her mother over to Shriners, and I said, "What are you complaining about? There are children here who barely can walk. They are trying to get better to walk in whatever other conditions, and that hospital charges people no money, and they take care of all of the hospital needs, and that laid the foundation for what you see at St. Jude's in Memphis." So Shreveport does a lot of great things, and we need to celebrate a lot of our achievements. So I'm glad that Councilman Nicholson had this on the agenda today to have their 100 years be recognized, and that's something that we need to be very, very proud of. So with that, again, with our soon-to-be-confirmed Chief Reese, I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Sammy, Mayor.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, apartment M110, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I'm speaking on Resolution 970 about May 22nd. This will be a great idea to celebrate this date, to be May 22nd, known as the Maritime Day, and I hope other people will take the time to do the same thing for this observance. And just as Craig Lee was talking about, 969, I like the idea just as well to celebrate the 100 years of providing life to the changing children's lives at the Shriners Hospital too. I believe, John Nicholson, that this is a good thing that you brought up today for the agenda. I really think it's a wonderful idea. I really think it's a wonderful idea. In the Shreveport area, for 100 years, they have really been changing the lives of children. And then, when the kids have a brand-new outlook on life, they can really be very happy to enjoy that when it comes time. And we still are in the need of sensor cameras for the Highland area, so help us if you could, please.
Dr. Gail Griffin?
Gidry Giffen.
Well, John told me this would be easy today, but I had to come and see it. Good afternoon, Chairman Green, Vice Chair Bowman, other city council members, staff, oh, and my newfound friend again, the mayor. I'm not here to oppose anything that you all are doing, and I'm not going to take up much of your time, but I do close my place of business when I feel that it's something important that is happening in Shreveport. And it's so wonderful to see that all of you have congratulated the chief even before you voted. So, I am in support of the new fire chief. I've been around different places. I've seen him. He's just about everywhere I go. I'm taking pictures, but I know he's taking pictures so that the citizens of Shreveport will never forget what is happening. So, I leave with prayers for all the children and all of the family who've lost members, because I know how the feeling is. I lost a family member a year ago, and it's still a difficult time. But when a mother or a father lose a child, it's even difficult because that child, years, are so young. So, if we keep putting the best people in place, we can see a big difference in Shreveport. I will no longer have to duck and cover at red lights, run-stop signs, because I feel with the new police chief and the fire chief working together, we'll have a better, and the city, which means you all will have a better place to live in. And when I'm newly found publisher, if you need a reader, just give me a buzz, and we can proof instruct her things for her because, and as I was mentioning to Dr. Cherry, I attended the Red Mass, which was a beautiful mass, in that I worked with medical students, four-year undergraduate students wanting to become medical doctors. I helped them structure their profile to get into medical school, and all of them, so far, have gotten into medical school and have gotten their tuition 100% paid. So, thank you so much, and I hope that you all continue to support our mayor and his staff. And of course, we pray for all of you, too. And City Councilwoman Taylor, she's going to always be my friend, y'all. So, her mother taught my son in English, I think it was, and boy, did a wonderful job. So, take care, and I'll try not to come back only on positive things, but you all are doing a good job, and take care. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Nona Livingston? Ms. Livingston, let me ask you a question real quick. Did you, you want to speak now or during this particular time of what we're...
I can speak at whichever time you prefer me to. You want me to go now? Okay. So, my name is Nona Livingston. My name is Nona Livingston. I reside at 11180 Morton Road, Keithville, Louisiana 71047. I am here to talk about ordinance, or the ordinance listed as 61 for the amendment to Chapter 102, Article 2 and 3A of the vehicle-for-hire ordinance for the taxi companies. I've probably emailed some of you quite a few times. I'm a little persistent. I'm sorry. I've been trying to work on this for a while. I currently own two of the three taxi companies, well, two of them now, that are in the city. We have been trying to get some changes to the rates for a long time for the drivers. I have around 45 drivers that have been suffering with the rising gas prices, and it has been very difficult for them to maintain. So, some of the things that we have asked for is just small increments in rising some of the minimum rates for passengers when they get into their vehicles, asking for things like special event ratings, flat rates for airports, things that they do in big cities already. But we are dealing with things as, you know, our airport is not exactly centrally located. It is seven and a half miles from the center of Shreveport from downtown. So, typically, when we get an airport call, nine times out of 10, we're going to go there, and we're going to pick those people up, and they're going to go to Monk House Drive. And for that service, our guys are getting paid about $4 for that ride. And for the gas that they are paying, and they pay for their own gas, that is very difficult for them to maintain, especially when the gas prices reach $4 and they're still $3.50 and above. These prices have not been changed in a very long time. I bought the first cab company back in 2016. These ordinance were the same at that point. So, the things that we are asking for in these changes are things, they do not benefit me as the owner whatsoever. What they pay me as far as the dispatch services are the same, no matter what. It benefits them. It's the money that they make from their customers. It's the money that they put into their pockets in between the 40 and 50 of them. It's, they have literally been begging for months and months and months for me to do something for them, and it's all that I can do is just come and ask for the ordinance to be updated to a more current thing that fits our economical situation that we have right now. The only thing that I did ask for that does affect me individually is the vehicle-for-hire fees. Last year, I want to say it was Councilman Butcher, had put in for the vehicle-for-hire inspection stickers to be lowered from $175 to $37 a year. For us in a cab business, we were paying $175 per car. Me personally, I can own anywhere between 25 and 30 cars at a time. That is a huge expense for me in order to get all those cars inspected, not to mention to each individual person that owns their own car. Vehicle-for-hire, unfortunately, I don't think is here, but if they were here, they would tell you that I am one of the most compliant people that they've ever worked with. I have always been in compliance with anything that they've ever needed. I have the most compliant cars, up-to-date safety. When it comes to if there's an issue, I take care of it right then. I've never been one to move away from what the ordinance asks for. I've always followed all the rules as best as I can, and if I had a problem, I called directly. So, when we asked for the vehicle-for-hire fees, they were lowered to $37, but it was only for a 12-month period. And that is great, and thank you, and that was very helpful, but that vehicle-for-hire fee that we have to pay for that inspection every single year, when we pay $175, that exact same inspection is only $35 for a tow truck. And my parents used to own a towing company, so that inspection for that towing company is a whole lot more in-depth than what they're inspecting on our cars. So, for us to be having such a much larger fleet and paying $175 for the exact same sticker that a tow truck company is paying $35 for, it's just a little astronomical, and it's very hard to maintain. During COVID, we were, I mean, you guys know, all of downtown got shut down. I lost 20 drivers, which affects me directly. We had to apply for SBA to be able to keep our employees. We've kept all of them through the entire thing. We've gained the most of them back. And being able to keep our cars on the street, and we pick up between 8,000 and 10,000 people a month. We service every major hospital in the city. Willis Knighton, Chris Shumpert, Ochsner LSU. We are also working on a non-emergency medical transport at the same time. So, without us being able to do that, and now with the current situation from yesterday, we are going to be picking up about 2,000 to 3,000 more people. And I have to be able to meet that demand, and it's very hard to do when the expenses are so high.
The timer, isn't there supposed to be there to limit you to three minutes, but it's gone?
Okay.
So, let me just ask, is there any, just one specific thing else that you think we need to know?
No. I think I covered everything that you put into the ordinance to allow for us. Yeah?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Ms. Livingston, thank you. Thank you so much for coming up here. I would also like to note that Lyft and Uber really are not affected by this, and I know it's hurted your, I know it has hurt your business to a certain extent that we're holding you all to a separate category as we are them.
Yes.
I know, just from talking to people, that you do run a reputable business and that, that, you know, after what we heard yesterday, it's, we need a good cab company, or good cab companies in this town. So, I'm all for this, if this helps y'all and helps the drivers, because, I mean, gas prices at $4 a gallon, it's got to be killing them. So, and I didn't realize that we had that many riders in Shreveport. That's kind of amazing, so... But I support this piece of legislation and look forward to helping y'all out any way we can.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Livingston?
Yes, sir.
With respect to trips from the Shreveport Regional Airport, I understood you to say that presently, the metered rate is what riders pay?
Yes. Right now, we are only allowed to charge with the meter rate charges.
And it's often $5 for the trip?
Most people who come from the airport leave the airport and go to the local hotel, which can either be on Monk House or Financial Plaza, which keeps that trip under $8. If it goes to Monk House, you're talking about $4.
And if this passes, the cost of that trip to Monk House Drive for riders is going to...
It's going to be a $20 minimum trip, or the meter rate, if greater, if it exceeds the $20 in excess.
So, the trip will increase by a factor of five, the cost of that trip for a rider?
Approximately.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Marvin Mohammed? Marvin Mohammed, 2808 Hershey D. Wilson. Mr. Chair, I rise today to speak specifically on ordinance number 72. This is an ordinance that has been either tabled or postponed over the last, over the course of the last year. Its author, City Councilwoman Fuller, has been working with the administration behind the scenes to get this, to get a consensus on moving forward. I stand today as the second vice president of League of Regis Trail NAACP, saying that I am of full support. Two weeks ago, a question was asked, was raised by City Councilman Nicholson on a question that inquisitive founder and writer spoke about. And his question was about, the question about number five, about DBE. DBE, of course, is, stands for disadvantaged business enterprise. A disadvantaged business enterprise is a, is a individual or company or entity that is socially or economically disadvantaged, that owns 51% or more of that company. Whereas, our fair share director, Leon Willard, is not a DBE director. He is what John Settle failed to speak on, that he is, in fact, the DBE compliance officer for the city of Shreveport. And therefore, the DBE is, of course, under his privilege. His slander of Attorney Brown and her response to that is just that trash. It shouldn't even be considered, and I'm appalled that a licensed and practicing attorney would actually believe that he had a formal opinion, because he doesn't. He's in, he's, he's been disbarred. So, for him to write an article slandering the administration of this city is despicable. In fact, I also share with you, it is that type of rhetoric that leads to devaluing of black life. Our young black people, they see the mayor, our CFO, they see our CAO, our newly-appointed fire chief, our black police chief, our black city attorney, our black chair, our black vice chair. They see these men. They see our black city councilwomen. And if these men or women, if they are nothing, what are we saying to them? And so, now, they're now easily able to blast one, because they don't hate themselves. They do, but they're not suicidal, they homicidal, because now they are killing the very, the thing that they hate of themselves. I want to think about that, and we should stop importing that type of trash. And let's move forward. Let's move forward with ordinance number 72. I commend Councilwoman Fuller. It's a, it's a great step in the direction, particularly since the despair study that was just released saying that there's going to be an intergovernment agreement between governments. For what? Disadvantaged business enterprises. So, let's move forward. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. We have the following executive appointment to be considered. Fire Chief Clarence Reese, Jr. Is there a motion?
Somebody move.
Second.
It was moved by everybody up here and seconded by Councilwoman Fuller. Madam Clerk, did you get all of those who it was moved by and seconded by, Councilwoman Fuller? Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
And that motion carries with itself. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. This particular time, there are no items on the consent agenda for introductions are to be adopted. At this particular time, Madam Clerk, would you please proceed with regular agenda legislation?
Mr. Chair, Councilman Bowman has to ask if we can do the, read the resolution in honor of Cynthia Renee Hightower Jenkins at this time?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, sir. We'll pause and let him, let him do that now. Yes.
Mr. Williams, would you come up in place of Representative Sam Jenkins, please?
Brother Williams?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to dedicate the 100 block of Carondelet Drive in honor of Cynthia Renee Hightower Jenkins. Whereas, Cynthia Renee Hightower Jenkins believed in the American dream. She believed that she could successfully achieve goals that fulfilled her and move her family, community, and the greater society forward. She refused to let circumstances of birth or low expectations based on race or gender defeat her. Her American dream was achieved through hard work, sacrifice, and risk-taking. And whereas, Cynthia, a community activist, entrepreneur, mother, and wife, died on July 29, 2021, at the age of 64. And whereas, Cynthia was a proud graduate of Booker T. Washington High School and continued her education at Southern University. And whereas, Cynthia was a writer. She hosted a social column in the Shreveport Sun, penned several published articles, and wrote 19 original ballads, some of which she performed. And whereas, Cynthia had an entrepreneurial spirit. She was a fashion designer and founded the clothing line CHJ LaRue. She received numerous awards and honors, including the Shreveport Times Best Dress. She was featured on HDTV Spotlight, appeared as a talk show host, and the judge of a Miss USA page. She was featured on HGTV Spotlight, appeared as a talk show host, and the judge of a Miss USA pageant. Cynthia was employed for many years as a teller and mortgage clerk for American Bank and Trust and United Mercantile Bank. And whereas Cynthia lent her time and resources to religious, social philanthropy and financial organizations that made our community a better place to live, work, and play, including Baptist Bible Fellowship, The Links Incorporated, where she served as regional and international protocol chairman and vice president of the Shreveport Chapter, the Women's Philanthropy Network, the Junior League of Shreveport, the Committee of 100, President of the Minority Business Council, the Minority Business Opportunity Expo, the Downtown Rotary Club, the Executive Board of the Greater Shreveport Chamber of Commerce, Christian Services, Shreveport Chapter of Jack and Jill of America, Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship Foundation, Business and Professional Women of Northwest Louisiana Master Gardeners Association. And whereas Cynthia was the wife of Louisiana State Representative Samuel L. Jenkins and the mother of Atari and Anaya. And whereas, because of Cynthia's many contributions to the citizens of Shreveport in her demonstration that it is possible to achieve a fulfilling and exemplary life regardless of circumstances of birth, it is fitting and proper for the city of Shreveport to honor her life. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Shreveport and due legal and regular session convene that the mayor on behalf of the city is authorized to dedicate the 100 block of Carondelet Drive in honor of Cynthia Renee Hightower Jenkins.
Thank you very much. She was a well-capable person. I taught her, as a matter of fact, I taught at Southern University for 50 years and some kind of school board. And I really enjoyed seeing this fall out last night, the school that I put there, I put the Caddo Magnet School there. And I want to congratulate you for doing a good job in Shreveport. Keep Shreveport safe. We have some good people here, I taught some of them around here, and we love you very much. And keep Shreveport safe. Safety is very important, it's number one. And I agree that we need that. I taught Robin Green too, I think, he's one of my sons. Appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Brother William, thank you for coming. You taught me at Hernan and at Southern University, and that's why I'm the way I am now.
Right there.
Thank you, brother.
We appreciate, well, thank you, Mr. Williams, and also, just to add on Cynthia did. Cynthia had many, many contributions to Shreveport and to, to the citizens here as well. She was also a dear, close friend to my mom, especially during her time of sickness. And if, if, if anyone could paint a picture of the epitome of being stuck with someone side by side, it was Cynthia. And Cynthia is just a person of, she was a person of just life itself. She loved life, she loved people. Just why not, this, this is fitting and proper for her as stated, and, and I, Sam was lucky to have her, just wanted to say that.
One thing I didn't understand is, before she went to Dallas, she brought me a plate of catfish with five or six catfish on there. I couldn't understand why, but you'll understand it better by and by. Thank you very much.
Thank you, brother. Madam Clerk, would you continue?
Resolution 24, authorizing the employment of legal counsel to represent the city of Shreveport, and the city attorney's office has asked that this be withdrawn.
Moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Butcher, that this be withdrawn? Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 56, authorizing the approval of a price change in entering a contract with Hallmark Corporation for the purchase of 18 25 cubic yard real, rear loader packers.
Mr. Chairman, I invite any further advice, the city attorney would care to give the council on this legislation.
Could you give, give a motion and let's get it on the floor?
If I'm, if I'm moving, my motion would be to withdraw the legislation from the agenda.
I'm with that.
Second.
This had been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Butcher, that this legislation be withdrawn? Are there any questions?
I would, I would, before we vote, I would like to hear where we are though, before we do this. You have any update?
We, we have placed Hallmark in default, and we're gonna ask that they perform pursuant to the terms of the contract.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion, Councilman Bowman is coming.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 62, authorizing the mayor to execute certain documents and instruments relative to the subordination of the loan and mortgage relating to Coventry Place Limited Partnership.
Some move.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilwoman Bowman. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
And that motion carries with seven.
Resolution 63, declaring certain city of Shreveport, Louisiana supplies, materials, and equipment, specifically vehicles, to be surplus and to authorize the purchasing agent or her designee to sell and dispose of said surplus property by public auction.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilwoman Fuller. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
That motion carries with seven.
Resolution 64, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shreveport to consent to the partial assignment of an undivided 25% interest by Pine Wave Energy Partners, operating LLC of an oil and gas lease to Mammoth Minerals LLC and FPCC USA Inc.
Some moves.
Moved by Councilman Butcher, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions, of course, because they have talked to me about a lease with my church, I will be recusing myself from voting. If there are no questions, all in favor, will you vote?
Motion carries with six.
Resolution 65, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shreveport to consent to the partial assignment of an undivided 30% interest by Mammoth Minerals LLC of two oil and gas leases to FPCC USA Inc.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilman Butcher. Are there any questions? I'm recused.
Motion carries with six.
Resolution 66, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shreveport to sign a consent of the assignment by Pine Wave Energy Partners Operating LLC of three oil and gas leases to Silver Hill Haynesville E&amp;P LLC.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Butcher, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote. I'll be recusing.
Motion carries with six.
Resolution 67, employing professionals with respect to the issuance by the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, of not exceeding $70,650,000 of general obligation bonds in one or more series on a taxable or tax-exempt basis.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
That motion carries with seven.
Resolution 69, to celebrate Shriners Hospital for Children, Shreveport, for 100 years of providing life-changing care to children.
I move to postpone.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilwoman Fuller to postpone. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven to postpone.
Resolution 70, to recognize May 22, 2022, as National Maritime Day and to encourage citizens of Shreveport to celebrate this observance and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Some move by the chair, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 71, authorizing the mayor to dedicate the 100 block of Carondelet Drive in honor of Cynthia Renee Hightower Jenkins.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
That motion carries with seven.
Resolution 72, to allocate funds to specific not-for-profit organization for funds budget and the other charges in the 2022 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund.
Some move.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to May 24, 2022?
Resolution 73, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Shreveport and the state of Louisiana Facility Planning and Control Division of Administration for the Greenwood Road Extension, Greenwood Industrial Park Road Asphalt Road Planning and Construction.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilwoman Taylor. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to May 24, 2022?
Ordinance 65, amending the 2022 budget for the street special revenue fund, and ordnance 66, amending the 2022 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget.
Is there a motion to introduce these ordinance?
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilwoman Taylor. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Ordinance 72, to amend certain portions of Chapter 26 of the city of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the architecture and engineering selection process. And is it still that Amendment Number Three is the one to be taken out?
Motion to amendment three.
You said motion to?
To adopt Amendment Three.
Amendment Three, second.
Has been moved by Councilwoman Fuller, seconded by Councilman Bowman to adopt Amendment Three. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Some move as amended.
Second.
Has been moved, some move as amended on the ordinance. Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions?
I just want to thank the administration for working with me on this so that we could get this taken care of.
Thank you. There are no questions? Let's vote.
Motion carries with seven. Thank you for making it plain so I can understand.
Ordinance 55, amending the 2022 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 56, amending the 2022 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund budget.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilwoman Fuller. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 57, amending the 2022 General Fund budget.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 58, amending the 2022 budget for the General Fund.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilman Butcher. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 59, declaring certain city property to be surplus property and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Fuller. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, this legislation concerns fairground fields, is that right?
Yes. That motion passes with four.
Ordinance 60, authorizing an encroachment into the city's public rideaway located on a portion of Dean Road in Cedar Creek Drive, as more fully described herein, and to authorize the mayor or his designee to execute an encroachment permit with Pine Wave Energy.
Some move.
Second.
Has been moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilman Butcher. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with six, one hour time.
Ordinance 61, to amend Chapter 102, Article 2 and 3A of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to vehicle for higher license fees and taxicab fares.
Motion to postpone.
Second. Thank you.
Motion to postpone by Councilwoman Fuller, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with six to postpone, one hour time.
Ordinance 62, zoning case number 21-223-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the south side of Stoner Avenue, approximately 260 feet east of Crestwell Avenue, Shreveport Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R3 multifamily residential district to C1 neighborhood commercial district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Fuller, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote. What was the motion?
To approve.
To approve, okay, that's what I thought.
Changing from multifamily to commercial.
All right, I just want to make sure.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 63, zetting case number 22-5-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east side of Yuri Drive, approximately 200 feet south of King Place, Shreveport Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from I1 Light Industrial District to IMU Industrial Mixed Use District.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Butcher, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 64, zoning case number 22-16-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Stevens Road and Flornoy Lucas Road, Shreveport Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R17 Single Family Residential District to R17 Single Family Residential PUD Planned Unit Development District.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Butcher.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table today?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have no property standards, ABO appeals to consider today. We have no MPC or ZBA appeals to consider. We have taxi cab appeal to consider today. Madam Clerk, would you read the information?
The taxi cab appeal is postponed from yesterday for Mr. Christopher Van Rusendall.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I've had an opportunity to review the city ordinance that is the basis for the police department denying the applicant's license. And I, I have to comment that there are no fault of anyone up here now, and certainly no fault of the police department, subsection three of the ordinance is inscrutable. It's ambiguous and it's, it's not clear to me whether or not the information presented yesterday establishes the applicant's eligibility. Specifically, there's reference to not having been convicted of a felony or any misdemeanor involving moral turpitude. It's not clear, given the absence of punctuation, whether moral turpitude modifies misdemeanor or both misdemeanor and felony. And then there's a further modifying prepositional phrase which indicates that something is defined for the purpose of the article as a longer repetitive history of violence or criminal behavior. My inclination, after reviewing the ordinance, is to apply My inclination after reviewing the ordinance, uh, is to apply, uh, what's called in the criminal law, the rule of lenity and interpret the, uh, the ordinance in a way most favorable to the applicant and let the man keep his job. Uh, he's been driving, uh, since he was granted a license last year, uh, and I just don't think it would be fair to him, given the ambiguity of this ordinance, not to grant him a license. I, I do think that the council and the city attorney's office should revisit this ordinance and make sure that it is sufficiently clear for the police department to consistently enforce. So with, with, with that preamble, my motion is to reverse the decision of the police department and grant the man a taxicab license. Thank you.
Second.
Has been moved and second that he would be granted his license. Are there any questions? My question would be, so you're saying because of how the legislation is written and how all of that, that, uh, basically, he is due to have his license?
I, I, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm suggesting that because the, the ordinance is unclear and that's not the applicant's fault and could be interpreted in a way that makes him eligible for his license, we ought to give it to him. And for future applicants, we need to revisit this ordinance and make sure that it says whatever we as a body wanted to say with respect to who is eligible to, uh, to drive a taxicab in the city. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any, any other questions?
Yeah, I'm, does the city attorney have a opinion on this? Just asking a question.
I got some additional information from Officer Alkire, which I think she needs to, uh, come up and express some information that might be helpful in getting a proper determination of this. So if I could have her come up, we can talk about it.
Good afternoon.
Do you swear to tell the whole, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Can you please describe to the council the arrest, probation and parole record of Mr. Van Rosendall?
So, uh, Mr. Van Rosendall was arrested in twenty fifteen for two counts of monetary instrument abuse, which is a felony.
Can you tell, can you tell the council exactly what that is?
Excuse me?
What is monetary instrument abuse?
So monetary instrument abuse, to simplify it to its most basic form, is a, um, manner for money, whether that's counterfeit bills or a counterfeit check was utilized by Mr. Vander Rosendall, Van Rosendall, um, and either created fraudulently or passed fraudulently with the intent to defraud someone.
Okay, and that was in November of two thousand and fifteen, is that correct?
Correct, November thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen. Um, so he was charged with two counts of that in November of two thousand and fifteen. One count was null pross by the court. Um, Mr. Vander, Van Rosendall pled guilty to the second charge, um, the second count in March of two thousand and sixteen. During that guilty plea, he accepted a sentence of five years, um, at hard labor and a fifteen hundred dollar fine. That five years at hard labor was suspended and he was given three years of supervised probation by the courts, um, which initially set his probation to end in March twenty-ninth of two thousand and nineteen. In speaking with the Louisiana State Probation and Parole Office, he never reported to the probation office and absconded, um, and he did not pay restitution as ordered by the courts. So he was arrested in April of two thousand and seventeen for felony theft, um, and he was remanded into the custody of DOC for that charge. And that violated his probation and revoked his initial sentence, so then he was reinstated, his five years initial sentence was reinstated.
On what date? On what day was that?
Um, and that was on October seventeenth of two thousand and seventeen. So, uh, he was released from that secondary arrest in, uh, October of two thousand and eighteen and he was, um, given parole for the remainder of his sentence, which was initially set to expire July second of two thousand and twenty-two. But he received early release for a nonviolent offense and was released from parole on August of two thousand and twenty.
And, um, it's my understanding pursuant to one oh two sixty-two, he was denied his license because, well, why don't you tell the council why he was denied his license?
He was denied his license because according to, uh, city ordinance, you have to be five years free from a felony from the, um, conclusion of the sentence. So his sentence was concluded in August of two thousand and twenty, based on the city ordinance, he cannot apply or receive a vehicle for hire permit until two thousand and twenty-five, August of two thousand and twenty-five.
And I withdraw my second.
Uh, may I interject a question?
Sure.
Subsection three references conviction of any felony or misdemeanor involving moral turpitude. Uh, how does this Shreveport Police Department interpret that ordinance as applied to this applicant?
I interpret it that the moral turpitude pertains to the misdemeanor, not the felony.
Okay. Now, what about the, the.
It's any felony arrest or any felony conviction and a misdemeanor of moral turpitude.
Uh, what about the modifying phrase defined for the purpose of this article as a long or repetitive history of violence or criminal behavior? What does that modify in that ordinance?
To me, that modifies the moral turpitude.
And, and with all due respect, Councilman Nicholson, it says convicted of, of any other felony or of any misdemeanor. And then it says or within a felony. It uses the word or, not and, so it could be one or the other.
Uh, if.
In this particular case, it happened to be both, but.
Well, I, I may not carry the day, but I will, uh, I will offer that absent a comma between felony and or, uh, it is equally grammatically correct to read moral turpitude as modifying both felony and misdemeanor as it is to read a modifying misdemeanor. And so my motion stands, it will fail without a second, uh, but that's my view of this order.
I second your motion.
Thank you.
Y'all have any other questions for Officer Alkire?
The other statement that was made yesterday by Mr. Van, Mr. Van Rosendall was that he had been, um, a cab driver within the city for nineteen years on and off. I pulled his record the last time prior to two thousand and twenty-one when he received a vehicle for hire permit, in my opinion, um, prior, or inherently was back in two thousand and fifteen, which would have been prior to his felony conviction.
The only other comment I'll offer, Mr. Chairman, is that this is not, uh, this doesn't reflect, uh, in any way on the police department or the officer before us. This is an ambiguity that is the responsibility of the council to rectify, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question? Any other comments?
You just said in your opinion though, right? It's just your opinion.
Well, uh, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think that my recitation of, of, uh, the grammar of the ordinance is my opinion. I think that's objectively correct and I, you know, I think if, uh, I think about any lawyer, uh, can read an ordinance, uh, more than one way in good faith and it's ambiguous, so that's, that's where I am on.
Madam, hold on just a minute. Madam Clerk, would you give us some direction? First of all, we had Councilwoman Fuller who made the motion, you had Councilman Nicholson who seconded the motion.
Reverse.
By the way, reversed.
Reverse, I made the second.
Make the second. She withdrew her second, so where do we stand? Do we need.
Councilman Jackson gave his second.
Okay, Councilman Jackson, uh, seconding, okay, Councilman Bootcher.
So here's, here's where I'm at with this. I, besides propositions and commas and all this other kind of stuff that we're talking about, um, I think that the whole thing is the guy's been driving for a year. He got it somehow and has not had any infractions. And add that in with the ambiguity of what you're saying, Councilman. I, I'm gonna have to vote for him to get his license and, and keep it, so that's just, I wanted to let you know that's where I'm at. I, I think that he got it, whatever the reason was, I think we probably should have been sitting here last year talking about this and I probably would have voted differently. But we've not had any issues with him as a lawyer, I'm assuming it's had no issues with him. Could, can you come up? And I guess you need to swear her in too there.
Yes, swear her in.
Well, before you swear her in, let me say this, I just, I, I'm not voting with something that's going against this, the, the ordinance. I, I, I've been there before, I'm not doing that again, so I'm, my, my vote is strong and it'll be no. And I'm asking my colleagues to go along with me. Thank you.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth to help you, God?
I do.
So, so since he's been driving, he, he had a license whenever you put him to work?
He did.
Okay, not a, not a receipt?
No.
He had a license?
He had a valid license.
Okay. And, uh, have you had any issues with him at all, any complaints, anything?
He did not come to me until February of this year when I made the transaction to purchase out the original two-two-two taxi. Prior to that, I did not know him. Um, but since that, then, he had a valid operator's license, 'cause that's what we require of everybody. Um, it was soon to be expired. Um, I have no, had no trouble with him since he got there. He has had no customer complaints, no other issues, he's compliant with his car checks, um, with everything else that we require of him in the office, I've had no issues with him. However, when he went to get his renewal, when I found out he had been denied, um, the first thing I said was, you're gonna need to come park your car, because as long as you're denied, until you get it appealed, you cannot drive any longer. That's why when he said yesterday he had been out for a few weeks, well, because he got let go the day his card got denied and his last card expired.
Thank you.
I, I'd just like, thank you, ma'am. Sir, I'd like to say this to you, that I, I, I hate to put you out of a job. I have one request and if you can do that request honestly, from your heart, the council staff, Ms. Ewing and all of them said that you were very nasty to them. If you have enough in you to come up and apologize to them, I would vote for you to keep your job because somebody, somewhere made a mistake. I don't know if it was a mistake intentionally and gave you the license. And since they did it, I feel a burden that it was not your fault that you got the license, but you got it. But according to our council staff and the clerk, you were very nasty to them. If you can have enough man in you to apologize to them without any buts or is's or whatever, I'll vote for you. If you can do that without, I just want an apology to them and I don't want anything else but just a simple telling them you're sorry for however you acted on the phone, I'll vote for you. Other than that, I will not. I sincerely apologize to anybody I took my frustrations out on. This has been really frustrating for the past few weeks and I really do sincerely apologize. Do y'all accept that? Well, they said they accept it, so you may have a seat, sir. Are there any questions?
Feels very like a flurry moment.
Ma'am?
This feels like a flurry moment. I remember that one time he was on the screen asking you, if a person, do they look like they wanna try hard to let him have a job? And that's why I said that, that's just what it reminds me of.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you, any other questions? Anyone else?
Thank you, Chairman, for doing that, that, that makes me feel better about the whole situation.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Anything else? Let's vote.
That motion passes with five.
Thank you. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Are there any reports from offices, boards and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report?
Yes, we did receive appointments for the MPC for Ms. McCullough and, uh, Ms. Tivido. And those will be subject for confirmation at the next meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, does any other council member have any additional communication? I would just like to, my communication would be on the, uh, twenty-fourth, council members and if you all can come for the prayer, I believe that the power of prayer will make a difference in our city. And I believe that from that God will give us some answers. It certainly would be appreciative, uh, for you to be here if you can adjust your schedule. Any council member having additional communications? We seem that we have no executive session. If there's nothing else to come before this body, we are joined.